Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975.
We would like to take a moment in silence, and at this time, if you could, think about all the individuals that gave their lives for this country, and we celebrated over this weekend, and thank God that He created individuals that were willing to do that, right? Our country is free, we might have problems with it, or whatever, but it is the greatest country in the world, in my opinion.
Amen.
And we want to thank God, and we want to thank all those families, all their loved ones sacrificed for our freedom. We'll take that moment in silence. If we could stand, it will be led by, flexibly, by Commissioner Victoria Loes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, will call?
Commissioner Alstino.
Here.
Commissioner Aubrecht.
Here.
Commissioner Romero.
Here.
Commissioner Loes.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor.
Present.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Here.
Director Sorrow.
Here.
Do I have a motion and second and second and dispense with the reading of the minutes from the last public meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In correspondence dated May 6, 2025, Atlantic City Electric gave notice of filing and public hearings in the matter of petition Atlantic City Electric Company for approval of amendments to its tariff to provide for an increase in rates and charges for electric service, BPU docket number ER 24110854, and notice of virtual public hearing scheduled May 27, 2025, at 3:00 p.m. and 5:30 p.m., which members of the public may participate. To join the meeting directly, you can dial in at 1-646-828-7666. When prompted, the meeting ID is 1-609966383 and pass code 924525. For copy, please, for plus same at Commissioner Board of Clerk.
It looks like we're going to have a presentation tonight. Okay, our CFO, now I'm going to be calling upon Christopher Hart, thank him for his hard work in getting this, putting it together, and I thank Robin Grieatt, she was very instrumental in getting everything spurred away for the presentation, okay? We appreciate her, Robin. So, I'm going to turn this over to our CFO, Christopher Hart.
Just making more adjustments, sorry.
Oh, no bad jokes like the other.
I don't have any in my script. So, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Commissioners, and everyone here tonight. We're here to introduce our budget finally, and present it to the residents of Cumberland County.
Is that microphone on?
Yeah, make sure it's on, because I'm not sure they can.
Is it on?
Okay.
It's on.
Can you close your tone?
Yes.
Need extension on this.
Yeah, okay.
I'll crouch down a little. So, tonight, we're here to introduce our county budget finally. It's been a few months since I joined the county, and I'm really glad that I had a chance to work on the budget this year. This budget was crafted with an emphasis and a vision on building a path forward with direction, purpose, and credibility. And this year's budget, I'm happy to say, is a fiscally sound budget with prudent decisions for success in its operations, with the mindset of our county residents at the forefront. I believe that we should be proud of this budget and the pathway forward it provides in order to achieve our goals and objectives. I want to thank our Commissioners, and especially Director Sorrow, for allowing me to work on this budget, giving me confidence, and allowing me to balance the budget this year. It was challenging, to say the least, however, I think you'll be pleased after the presentation. I also want to thank the county management team and all of our county employees for their contributions this year, and I just want to make a note that without our employees, we would not be successful, so thank you very much. So I thought it would be a good introduction phase to the budget, to just talk a little bit about what the county offers to its residents. I think it's really important to just embellish on that, if you will. So I'll try to touch on some points. I know the departments turned over a bunch of facts and figures at our request, so I'll try to touch on them all, and I apologize if I don't hit everybody, but I just think it's important to set the tone for this budget. So we're going to talk about the Department of Public Works, first and foremost. I don't know if a lot of people know this, but county government was actually formed on the basis of the DPW department, so I felt it was probably the best thing to do was start with them. So, buildings and grounds, the maintenance division. They oversee 24 county-owned buildings and the courthouse. They completed 4,240 maintenance requests in the past year. And engineering, they oversaw $17.8 million in construction projects, resurfacing over 35 miles of roadways in the past 12 months alone. Next, mosquito. So, their water management program. They cleared 4,191 feet of vegetation, removed 11,315 feet of spoil from four different ditches, and cleared 10,240 feet of debris from six different streams. Interesting stat, too, they also provided, they actually collected 1,132 tires across 12 municipalities. More responsibilities of public works. The motor pool, they maintain over 400 pieces of equipment. That does not include small things like chainsaws and weed whackers and things like that. The road division, 1,479 public service requests, and they maintain 550 miles of roadways. Stormwater. They conducted 3,647 inlet inspections for stormwater runoff and maintained 15 miles of guardrails to enhance road safety. And also, the bridge division, they maintained and repaired 258 bridges and culverts. And not, last but not least, traffic safety, they maintained 20,000 signs and 80 traffic signals. So you can see the breadth of the division itself. They have quite a lot to handle over the course of the year. Let me see, next slide. So, office on aging, they provide 11,000 congregate meals and 14,623 home-delivered meals. They also do quite a bit of a lot of other stuff, but in the advent of time, we'll just move over to the next one. Human services, they provide critical support for residents through financial assistance programs, mental health and addiction services, and homelessness prevention. And I'm going to mention IT, just because Robin's here. The IT department, they handled seven-year refresh of county firewalls. They also processed more than 200,000 emails, which now 20% are now blocked automatically for suspicious content.
Mr. Hart, I hate to interrupt you, but we're really having a tough time here. Can you hold the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
In your hand? Yeah.
Yeah. Is that better?
Yes, it's amazing.
Oh, okay. It's just not long. Okay, so the library, they served 40,693 patrons in 2024. They also provide free GED and ESL classes, job listing help, tutoring, and outreach events. And we're going to finish it with Veterans Affairs, because Memorial Day was just yesterday, so they, there are 5,487 veterans in Cumberland County. And the division assists veterans with claims, guiding them through the process of getting financial support for service-related health issues. This process usually takes 18, eight to 15 months or so. There were 340 office visits, and there were 634 referrals. Let me see. Slide. Can we go to slide six? So I just wanted to mention really quick, too, the affiliated agencies, that the county does provide financial support and a variety of other resources to these agencies throughout the year. As you can see up here, there's the Rowan College of South Jersey, you have Cumberland County Library, you have the Authority, and there's also CC Tech, along with Public Health, and, you can't see that on there, oh, Workforce Development, excuse me. All right. So, now we're going to get into the budget itself. The key budget deliverables in this year's budget is that it's a fiscally sound budget that focuses on our county residents and mine, and delivers the following. It's a balanced budget that achieves all the county objectives. It focuses on long-term planning. It focuses on creating synergies amongst the departmental operations. It also maintains required funding for all operations. It maintains a healthy level of funding to the outside agencies, which we previously mentioned. These are success, paramount to successful county operations. Long-term focus on maintaining a robust fund balance, which is surplus, and also new program initiatives such as transportation and parks. One-time options to balance the budget have been removed. We're using shared services within the county government to create synergies and keep costs low. A point of emphasis in this year's budget is that it funds $1 million in pay-as-you-go capital projects, and begins the process of self-funding our capital program, which increases our purchasing power. This will be the first time in 15 years the county has funded greater than $1 million in the capital fund, which is direct capital funding, not issuing debt. Why is this important? Because bonding costs the county roughly 40% more from interest and issuance costs, reducing our purchasing power. And last but not least, this year was definitely a reset in our budget, where we had to match our revenues, which are predictable revenues, with our expenditures. So, I thought it was important to point out that this budget funds an additional 34 positions by investing in a stronger workforce and a higher-level service in county operations and public safety to our county residents. As you can see, public safety is 10 positions, judicial is six, and DPW is four. These, I'll just emphasize what this means. There are vacant positions in the budget right now, and these are the positions that were funded. There were a certain amount of positions that were not funded, however, these are the ones that are getting funded. The overtime reduction mandate, which is a focus on reducing utilization of overtime countywide, and this budget funds all our statutory obligations such as debt service, pension, and health benefits. So I just wanted to mention what were the cost drivers in this budget. Of course, there's the normal inflationary pressures, those persist. You have jail and IP transport and housing costs, juvenile detention, there's lawsuits. Those, that line particularly in the budget is up 700%. The combined insurance costs are up 8%. Debt service payments are up 186,000. Utility costs are up 4%. On the revenue side, the most significant aspect in our budget is that we lost $5 million over the course of the last two years in federal revenue from the OP funding, so that totals $10 million, and that really set us back, so that was one of the biggest driving forces in balancing the budget this year. One of the other critical messages in this budget is that surplus usage is declining by 700,000. We want to focus on maintaining a robust surplus balance to ensure we have healthy reserves going forward. So, where do your county tax scholars go? 63% to maintain operations, 13% capital budget funding, 14% insured payroll taxes, 9% statutory expenses for pension and social security, and 1% go to lawsuits.
To what?
Lawsuits. County budget control, or lack thereof. On the revenue side, we do control about 81% of the revenue decisions in the budget, and 19 are non-controllable. On the appropriations side, we have roughly 44% of our expenditures are under county control, and 56% are not controllable. Okay. So here's a summarized version of the big document that's available for most of us to look at tonight, and going forward. The budget revenues will start on this side. We are presenting a reduced budget in 2025. It's down slightly from 2024. We have held the line on out-of-control costs by bringing forth a budget that is less than last year. This is simply, basically unheard of in recent times. The main driver for revenue loss, as I indicated earlier, is the federal funds, the OP funds, where $10 million was used to offset the costs of the budget, which are no longer available to us going forward. We are also reducing surplus usage this year to preserve the fund balance for future years and to use it as a guide for the future. So I just wanted to reiterate, as we look at the appropriation side, the 2025 budget holds the line on increased costs, and it actually comes in lower than last year. It comes in lower in an environment over the last four years, where the combined inflation has risen about 20%. Insurance costs are up 10% this year for the county, and 18% this year at the state level. General insurance costs are up about 5.6%. Energy costs are also significantly impacting the county operations at a proportional rate of over 17%, exceeding our state-mandated cap laws. Surplus. We generated more surplus in the last year than 2023 by $2.1 million. Surplus is trending up, and it's up 10% this year. We have made a commitment to continue focus on a healthy surplus balance. The dependency to use surplus in this year's budget is down by 7%. This graph is a, taken from the abstract deratables from the tax board, and as you can see, when a graph goes up and to the right, that's actually very good news. So we've experienced significant ratable growth in our county over the last three years, in particular. Valuations have increased 34% over the last three years. It's probably a testament to the economic growth in the county. People are moving here, and they want to live here, so valuations are increasing. This year alone, our equalized ratables are up $1.1 billion, and they're up $3.3 billion in the last three years. On average, our county assessed value is also up, as a result, the last five years by 5%. What are the tax impacts in our 2025 budget? Well, quite simply, the 2025 county budget provides a 5 cent tax decrease from 89 cents to 84 cents. Overall, the tax rate decrease was 8 cents, and only 2.9 cents was used to balance the budget. Five cents was given back to the residents. The average county tax, as you can see, as a result of decisions in this budget, resulted in a reduction in the average home of approximately $66. So that equates to the budget tax impacts for our residents are lower than last year. So lastly, upon approval tonight, the second reading of the budget is scheduled to take place on June 24 at 6:00 p.m., and that's when the public hearing takes place, and there'll be a vote on the adoption of the budget. And I just want to thank Robin tremendously for helping with the presentation. She's the one that really designed this and made it look really nice, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Appreciate all the effort that you put into this. What we'll do is we'll have an open meeting, the next session, for all questions. Just so you can sit down, take this all in, if you have the paperwork, you can go through all of it, read it, and then when we have our open session for the budget next meeting, you'll be able to ask all your questions. Okay.
Do I have a motion and second, that the ordinance be read on first reading by Title Only?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance 2025-3 approving Cap Bank for the 2025 county budget. Do I have a motion and second that introduces the ordinance on first reading?
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrecht. Commissioner Alstino.
Yes.
Commissioner Aubrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
A very big yes, thank you.
Notice is hereby given that ordinance 2025-3 was introduced and approved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Cumberland on first reading on May 27, 2025. It will be further considered for final passage after public hearing thereon at a meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to be held at the Cumberland County Administration Building, 164 West Broad Street, Richland, New Jersey, 08302, on June 24, 2025, at 6:00 p.m., prevailing time at which time and place comments and objections to the ordinance 2025-3 may be presented by members of the public. During the week prior to and including the date of such meeting, copies of said ordinance will be made available to the general public who shall request the same at the Office of Clerk to the Board of County Commissioners, 164 West Broad Street, Richland, New Jersey. Resolution 2025-269, resolution introducing and approving the calendar year 2025 county budget and notice of public hearing. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Alstino.
Yes.
Commissioner Aubrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and second for public comment on resolutions only?
So moved to open public comment on resolutions only, ma'am, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone from the public that would like to adjust the board on resolutions only, you can step forward and please state your name and location.
Good evening. Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships. On Resolution 2025-276, it's a resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State contract vendor for repairs to a mower used by the Cumberland County Department of Public That's a lot of money for repairs. When, with Resolution 2025-289, it's a resolution authorizing the purchase of two X-marked 60-inch zero-turn mower rear deer discharge underbid for the Cumberland County Department of Public Works. It says two, and the price is $26,717.68. This was an awful big repair, and it doesn't really tell me what kind of piece of machinery it was. And then, on Resolution 2025-305, this is a resolution appointing member to the Workforce Development Board, Jerry Balques, CCI-A. Well, the chairwoman, Dawn Hunter, really needed to be reappointed, or you need to put somebody to take her place, because I was at the last meeting, and we didn't have a quorum. Because I was at the last meeting and we didn't have a quorum because of the appointments. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else that would like to step forward and speak for word on resolutions only?
Motion closed.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. On the first note, you probably don't have the actual resolution. The mower is a mower that's worth somewhere in the vicinity of $350,000. Is that correct?
About $300,000.
Okay.
I know we're called.
And I'm looking at the actual invoices and it's actually two pages long of parts. And it's just, it's a very large mower. It's quite expensive. Do you want to step up?
Sure.
If you would.
Sure.
And also the other mowers aren't the same size?
No.
Okay, so please explain that.
Department of Public Works. The first mower is called an arm mower. It's a large tractor that has equipment that goes off the side to cut back vegetation, woods, tree branches, things of that nature. The second two, again, to replace a new one is around $300,000. So the repair in totality is a fraction of what a new one would cost. The two mowers that we're purchasing are zero-turn mowers, lawnmowers. So it's two different, apples and oranges.
Okay, that's what we need. Thank you.
One's a tractor.
Tractor with an arm.
One with a truck.
Correct. The pendant is called an arm mower. It's the arm mower.
Repair car includes a tractor.
Wait, 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 wait. Okay, we have the questions, okay? You gave the answers to the questions. We can't have the dialogue going back and forth. The thing is, you got two different types of mower. One's an arm mower that is attached to a tractor that reaches out, okay? And it has a lot of moving parts as new joints. It has, I'm going through the bearings, all the bearings have to be replaced in this, have clutches, all that. They had to be replaced, okay? The other mowers are two mowers, they're standard lawnmowers, okay, zero turn. They're not the size of the one that is attached to the side of the tractor. Is there anything else, sir?
No, sir.
There you go. All right. As far as the other, we are going to make the appointment. What we're looking for in the appointment, I would really like to see a business person on the western side to be appointed. I see a lack in that. I'd like to see a better, what do you call it? Representation for the county on this, okay? Not having one organization mean violent chamber commerce. I know she's been around for a long time. I know her personally. But it seems like the questions were, well, that's the violent chamber commerce. Why wasn't Milville or why wasn't Richland? So what we would like to do again is I would like to get better representation on this board throughout the whole county. And we are actually looking for a western side business person for this position. And that's the reason why we did what we did. Okay, that being said, questions are answered. Let's move on.
Department head comments if there are any.
Are there any department head comments? None seen? Okay, we can close. Do we need a motion to close that? No, okay.
Okay. Resolution 2025-270, resolution authorizing the county surrogate office to exceed the 2% budget cap for the 2025 county budget. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yeah, I just have one question. I noticed serving will have a really big budget. Do we know what caused the excess?
Well, that's a good question then. Christian?
Sure. So last year in September, there was an assistant position hired in the division. That's it's driving, so.
Okay.
Well, there was an assistant surrogate already. Zavala Garofalo was the assistant surrogate along with Munir and then they hired.
That isn't that.
Nelson was hired as the new assistant surrogate, but there already was an assistant surrogate.
We'll check into that for you.
Yeah, I'm sure.
That is a good question. I have no idea. And we'll just have to look up that line item, okay? Would that be good?
Okay, good.
Okay. All right, let's continue.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Do I have a motion and second to vote by consent agenda on resolutions 2025-271 through 2025-312?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
I do want to abstain from one that's the, give you another, but yes, or the rest of the, the reappointment, the college, so it'll be 308. So I'm abstaining.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and second to adopt resolutions 2025-271 through 2025-312 by consent? Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Do I have a motion? I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
I just want to make a comment on 288. This is where they put a lowered speed limit, which somehow we have control over of a little street between two, it's a road between Upper Pittsburgh, Upper Deerfield and Deerfield. It's two day roads connected by a little road, which should be 25 miles an hour, but it's, we can't, we had a, it was the county control, it was not in the local, so it was actually from Deerfield initiative, the request. And we followed through to lower the speed limit to what was appropriate, being by our engineering. So the state road now has a road, it's a local road connected. And so actually it was 50 miles of speed limit. It was lower.
Okay, good. Thank you. So yes.
And you're abstaining from 309?
Yeah. Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-313, resolution awarding a contract for providing supportive services for children, adults, and families funded by the Cumberland County Department of Human Services, Human Services Advisory Council, RFP 25-14. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-314, resolution authorizing a shared service agreement between Cumberland County Sheriff's Office and the City of Milville for Cumberland County Sheriff's Office to provide public safety assistance. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Just very common. This took a little bit, but I want to compliment our sheriff department and City of Milville working together to solve. This is a big issue in the City of Milville right now. The commissioners saw that. They stepped forward. They made an agreement. They actually talked to our sheriff, who's very open to this idea and we're going to provide a service. They're very shorthanded and we're going to provide a service to them. Be paid for our service.
But what I'd like to do is I'd actually like to get the sheriff to come up afterwards to actually explain what they're going to do.
A little bit more complex.
All right, since I'm voting and I like to make a comment, so I'm doing that. So yes, I would love to hear from him, but I'd like to make a comment that I'm very, it's good. I appreciate that we're doing this. It was a very proactive move on our part. So, yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes, if I may take the pause.
Sheriff, would you please come up and explain exactly the shared service that'll be between the county sheriff's department and the City of Milville?
Good evening, everyone. Mike Donato from the sheriff's department. Briefly, I'll discuss a little bit. I don't want to talk about the tactics and stuff that we're going to use, but basically entered into a shared service agreement with the city utilizing UEZ funding to reimburse the county for basically for proactive patrols utilizing sheriff's officers and supervisor various times and days throughout the week. We'll send over a four-man team, a four-man woman team and supervisor to do four-hour blocks within the city and we will then be reimbursed utilizing their UEZ funding.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Sheriff. It's a good thing for all of us, especially being able to help out one of our cities.
Resolution 2025-315, resolution authorizing renewal application of the New Jersey Department of Human Services Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services for the Substance Use Disorder Fee for Service Network Initiative for SFY 2026 through 2027. Do I have a motion and second?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-316, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for voting machine programming, testing, and support services for primary 2025 election. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second. Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-317, resolution authorizing assignment of grievance matters involving employees of the Division or Social Services. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-318, resolution rescinding initial submission for requests for proposals for providing life and accidental death and disability insurance for the County of Cumberland, RFP 25-21, and authorizing the re-advertising for proposals. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and second to accept treasurer's report as provided?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion and second for authorizing payment of all salaries and wages?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion and second to open public comment on new business only?
I'd like to make the motion, Madam Clerk, to open public comment for new business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. If there's anyone from the public that would like to step forward to talk about any new business on the board, please state your name and your location.
Good evening. Mike Donato, again, I apologize. I probably should have mentioned this during the department head thing, but I just wanted to give a shout out to Matt Goransson and the Buildings and Grounds. One of the services that I went to yesterday was out at the county veterans and the place is beautiful. It's immaculate. There was, I don't know, 50 or 60 people out there. I know Art was with us. And just the job that they've done out there, the place is amazing. So Matt, thank you to you and the Buildings and Grounds crew for that.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, I do have to second that. I was there with the sheriff. It was beautiful. It was a beautiful ceremony and it was very well done. So thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to step forward? Seeing none?
Motion closed.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner reports.
Okay, Commissioner reports. Commissioner Ostino.
All right. Some of the board meetings I attended was the Agriculture Board, 4H. Got them to meet their new employee there and human relationships. All doing great jobs. Tendons, somebody prayed yesterday in Milville, like Lawrence Township, Connor, or deceased owners.
Very good. Anything else, sir? That's it. Mr. Albrecht.
Yeah, actually want to read some statistics from the Department of Division of Social Services that they, so people know what's being done or how much volume is being done over there. Over, this is the last, this is an April, just an April itself. Public assistance over 1,963 applications. They recertified, this is actually a big process they're going through. Public assistance, 2,361, how many calls? 560, actually received 21, actually 567 calls. 21,513 in foot traffic. Let me make sure I say that. Number of visitors, 2,520. There were 21,513 telephone calls. There's 231 people that work there. Right now, there's 231 budget positions, but 209 are working. So they're kind of short-handed, 22 vacancies. They're waiting. They have some people in mind. They will take more, but they're waiting for approval from the state on some of these so they could hire, so we could up the snuff. It's a very busy, busy department. A lot of people work there. We're the county, one of our biggest departments. We also had the Human Services, this is a mental health awareness month, and we had a big event on the 17th of May, which Commissioner Lewis and I attended. Commissioner Romero also attended. They had a walk, many booths of information. People were walking in and out. They had yoga. They had a walk, which we participated in. The one thing I got out of that, talking to the different booths, there's many, many resources that I wish, and I have one paper here, but I like to make sure all the commissioners have this and anyone that wants it, is a resource, like a cheat sheet that provides information for them. So if there's someone that comes to you that you're dealing with, you can direct them to give them the numbers, hand this out to them so they could actually do the footwork themselves. We provide a lot of services and just getting to those services, and I thought it was a pretty good thing. We have a lot of dedicated people really working hard, a lot of volunteers. Something that went fantastic. And coming up as part of this is that we're actually dedicating a new vehicle for covering wheels. It's going to be on the Saturday, the 30th. And so come out, it's in front of the library. They're going to dedicate this new vehicle. What the purpose of this vehicle is that they actually could go somewhere with no pressure. If someone is there that's maybe homeless or having an addiction, they can walk on this bus and actually be taken to someplace to help them, to help them. And I, it's a big, that's the first step, literally a first step for these people to do it. So we provide that and you'll see it in different parts of the county park. You know what it's about. Cold weather, they serve coffee so people can get on there and get warm. But it's a real, it's an outreach that we, this commission is committed to. And this is a new vehicle. We won't be able to cut a lot of issues, so. So River the River Cutty, I don't know what time it is.
I think it's noon.
It's noon?
It's on Friday.
It's on Friday.
Oh, Friday and the 30th. Sorry, so.
Free operation.
Yeah, Friday the 30th. Actually, the next two events are Saturday, the same Saturday event's coming up. So keep that in mind. There's a, which actually, Moorestown, the River Fund is actually, this is a private company has donated the $300,000 needed groundbreaking to fix their bulkhead down in their little park they have. They wore another River Cutty, 11 o'clock on June 4th. Come out for it, which is needed. A local company donated the money to do it. They did approach the county of planning to help try to do this. The company stepped forward and do it. I think it's great, so. Commissioner Ostino mentioned the 4H. They have several programs coming up. We did introduce new employees. But they have several programs coming up, a 4H Expo program, the Cumberland County Fair. You'll see big displays for the 4H of all different facets of their operation and what they do. And it's all volunteer, mostly all volunteer, except for the three employees who then help keep it on track, which we now have three employees, which is good. But this, one thing I'd say about 4H, it's a very, their whole premise about what they do, the rabbit club, I don't know the names they say, but the rabbit, the horse. Public presentation is a key component to all their, these kids go from being shy individuals to being very outspoken, very well-spoken as they go through this program. And I've seen it, Commissioner Lewis has been at these awards ceremonies. I've seen it, Commissioner Ludes has been at these awards ceremonies, Commissioner Ostino's been, that they actually, you could see these kids when they were just there, and now they're up top, up in the stage, actually accept their awards, making a great statement, it should be commended, and it all starts with the County 4H Program, where they pull people, they do need volunteers, and it's, and they, people can start new programs, anything, they'll cover anything you need, as far as whatever you want to start a club in, if you're committed to it.
Commissioner Albrecht, I know you've got a lot of stuff with, we have other commissioners that need to...
Okay, don't I have time to cover my group? Don't I get a chance to do that?
Well, I mean, you have a time, so, you know, we're asking you to, if you can just...
Well, I don't know, Director, if we get one time, one chance to say what's going on, and they depend, and people ask us to spread the word a little bit, so I have, what, three minutes, four minutes to do it?
No, you're well over that.
Oh, all right.
Okay, I'm just asking you if you can...
Well, what do you want to do, not to tell anybody about any of this stuff?
Just...
No, okay, well, I mean, all right.
We have other commissioners that would like to talk.
Listen, I'll stay here for two more hours, and they have other things to say, so we let, can I, and I'm basically finished anyway, but...
Thank you, okay. Commissioner Ludes?
Thank you, Director Soro. First, I do want to commend two groups, I want to commend our Public Works Office and also our sheriff for really going above and beyond. I'm not surprised that we need repairs on the arm mower, because I have gotten reports back from numerous people who, when they go online and they put report, they put complaints in where foliage needs to be cut back, or things that need to happen, and the response time from Public Works is within 24 to 48 hours, so I'm pretty proud of that, and thank you very much, Matt Goransson, for doing that, and for really being on top of it with your staff, you and your staff are doing a tremendous job, so keep up the good work, and also to our sheriff's officer, sheriff's office rather, working with the City of Millville to solve a problem. I'm an educator in the City of Millville, I work at Millville High School, what's happening is heartbreaking, almost every week, we have another incident, a murder, some sort of violent act, and Millville does need the help, and they're having a difficult time getting more police officers, so in the interim, we're taking a model that other cities in the State of New Jersey are using with their UEZ funds, which is particularly important to me, because I remember being on the front lines in the early 2000s, when UEZ funds were legislated and came into bay with the State of New Jersey, and I think this is a really unique way to encourage growth in those areas. You're not going to get growth, you're not going to get businesses to come downtown if they don't feel safe, so this is a really interesting, out of the box idea, and I thank you very much for being willing to work with the City of Millville and come up with a way to protect our citizens, we appreciate that. Also, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, that when I first came on to the Commissioner Board, I went around this county and listened to a lot of people, and the number one thing that they all said is that they wanted to see economic development, they wanted to see better jobs coming into the area, and you're not going to get better jobs unless you have that economic development. And so then, I said, okay, well, how do we do that? And, you know, we start talking to businesses and say, what's going to attract you, what's going to get you here, and it might be surprising or not, but what they all say is that they want to have a good quality of life for their employees, they want their employees to have longevity, they want them to stay, they want them to be happy, that makes them more productive, and that means that they stay longer, so their investment is returned, and the things that they look for are good education, they look for recreation, and they look for affordability. And I'm really glad, I see that we have the poster here for Giles Street Park, which is just about finished, and will be opening up Friday?
Saturday.
Saturday, so I think that's fantastic. We have made, finally, I'm going to call them, you know, the sexy glossy improvements to the county fairgrounds, we've been working a lot in the county fairgrounds, but a lot of it has been things that you can't see, underground, electrical, things like that, and so this, we're finally into that next phase of finishing off different things in the county fairgrounds, which is sort of going to be the spearhead for the rest of the Recreation Department in Cumberland County, and already, we've attracted back different groups that haven't been here, hosting their events at the county fairgrounds, we have the Leni Alape Pawa, which is coming back this year, and we're really excited to see that, and then, right a week after that, we have the Friends of India Cut and Color Festival, which I always attend, and it's phenomenal, so I'm really glad to see that that is happening, that, you know, we're encouraging this multiculturalism, we're encouraging recreation, and all of this, the proof is in the pudding, that we have increased economic development because of the budget that was just announced tonight. Thank you so much, Mr. Hart, for your hard work on that. Taxes are actually going down in Cumberland County, we're holding the line once again, and even going a little bit beyond that, but reducing it by five cents, so I think that that's a pretty impressive thing, so I really appreciate all the hard work of the administration, and everyone that has done what they needed to do to put their nose to the grindstone and figure this out, and we've been able to do it because we've done the work leading up to now, so I'm really excited about that. Also, congratulations to Human Services for the new recovery on Wheels Bus, and this county, this is a major focus for this county, why? Because it's a major epidemic in this county, addiction and mental health, it reaches into every facet, and especially now, we're on really high awareness, because we had Seabrook House, unfortunately, as announced that they are closing, so they have, I think, they had 90 days to stay open, to continue treatment with the patients that they had, and then they will be closing, and that's 200 beds and over 100 and some employees that will be losing their jobs, so this county's going to stay vigilant to see what we can do, other out of the box ideas, to bring that service back to the county, because it's something that so many people here rely on. And lastly, I just want to make an announcement to our seniors, that we do have our Senior Symposium, that's what I like to call it, Thursday, May 29th, at 2:00, at the Cumberland County Library, all of our seniors in Cumberland County are welcome to come, and bring up any issues that they have on their mind, that they say, hey, this is a concern, this is where we'd really like to see the Office on Aging focus their resources, or finding a solution to, so it's a really great time for our Office on Aging to hear the direct concerns of the public, and then bring it back to us, so that we can make good governing decisions.
Thank you. Commissioner Romero?
Finally, all right. I don't have that much, I'd like to thank all the department heads for the fine job they do in our county, not just one or another, you are very important to all of us, and I thank you. And if you were not at Melissa's event, Mental Health, you missed a good singer there. Melissa, he did a great job with her vocals there, but other than that, you know, everything has been mostly covered, and I don't have anything else to do.
Commissioner?
Most of the things I was, I wanted to touch on, they've already been addressed, but I would like to remind everybody about the early voting, it starts June 6th. I did have the opportunity to attend two very nice parades over the weekend, I have never been to the violent parade, and I have to say that the presentation that they did was wonderful, I guess it was the largest crowd they've ever had, so next year, if you're looking for a parade, Memorial Day, that is a great parade to go to. I also wanted to thank the department heads for holding the line and helping make this year's budget a success, and thank you, Chris, for all that you did to work on that. And I would like to see if the sheriff could announce the date for the fishing tournament, that's coming up in June?
28.
June 28th, so keep that in mind, there'll be a fishing tournament in Cedarville Lake, correct? That's it.
Deputy Director Harper?
Thank you. So another busy month in the county. Last week, I did have a unique opportunity, I was able to take a tour of the 911 Center and OEM, and I spent a few hours over there, I had a chance first to sit down with some department heads, and had some nice conversations about exactly what they're doing, maybe some issues that they're facing, and how the county can help them, better assist them. But what I found very impressive was when I got the chance to walk back into the 911 Center itself, and to actually watch these men and women in action, when the calls were coming in, and how effectively and quickly and calmly that they were taken care of, it was very impressive to me. I learned that they work very long hours over there, they work long shift hours, and I was just very impressed, and these are people that keep us safe, day in and day out, and I just can't thank them enough, so I think they just need a little recognition, and I was really impressed by everything I saw over there, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Real quick, you know, all of us attend many meetings, a lot of meetings, meetings that aren't even mentioned during this part of the meeting. We had an important meeting recently, when we were told that our townships and our cities are going to be without ambulance service, or they're going to have problems, or the rate's going to go up, or all the different problems that are going to happen by the end of the year. So we had a meeting, and we were very fortunate that Senator Testa was able to contact individuals from DCA to come down. I had never, in all my years being either a preholder or commissioner, knew the kind of grants that are possible with the DCA, I just never knew. And it's amazing how much you learn, and we were very fortunate that the senator brought them down, he brought a sheriff down from Monmouth County, which they have a program that they're putting together when it comes to ambulance service, and it was very, very, a big learning experience for me, it really was. And why I'm bringing this up is that the county is working diligently with the cities and the townships to try to make our county better. Now, this is only the first of a number of other meetings that we're going to have, and Spirit was there, okay? The gentleman from DCA is supposed to be a consultant, so what we're going to do is we gave our mayors a homework assignment, and one of the things that this other sheriff did from Monmouth County was, he eliminated the lines to the cities and to the townships, which is a novel, what do you call it, idea, and what they did was they were able to figure out hotspots. Doing that, you're not going to have an ambulance way over here, when the hotspot is way over here. Knowing these hotspots, that's where you try to keep your ambulance in that area, and what it'll do is reduce the time getting to the emergency. So I'm very excited about this, I think if we get our mayors to do that, we're going to have another meeting with the mayors, we're going to pick the county apart and see where the hotspots are, then after we do that, we're going to call the gentleman from DCA, bring them down, and then use them as a consultant to determine how we can actually do some kind of routing system. So that was the first thing. The second thing is, everybody knows my passion for transit, Cumberland County Transit System, Sue Soro, who's in charge of CATS, she's been in contact with individuals up in North Jersey, that Sussex County, I believe it is, isn't it, Sussex? And we're looking at software to be able to work with New Jersey Transit, and we would like to see this working with other counties. So when we brought this up to the South Jersey Economic Development District, this kind of went through the route like wildfire, they were very, very interested in being able to coordinate all the counties together. What we're looking to do is that if a person had to go to Atlantic City for a job, they'll be able to get there. How can we do that? Well, our CATS, or, well, it'll be a transit system, will be able to take it to a certain area where they could be met by somebody from Kalamazoo, and bring this through. As everybody knows, South Jersey, especially Cumberland County, New Jersey Transit does not know where we're at, and we have some buses in the area, but when you think about it, when this works, and I say when, when this works, we're going to be able to have people get to work, people that don't have vehicles, poor people that don't have, we're going to be able to get them to work, and you're going to see employers and businesses see that Cumberland County is serious about this, in getting their workforce to their jobs, that they'll be willing to come here. So that'll help economic development.
So we'll be linking our services?
We're going to try to do that with this new software, okay? So doing that, you're going to be able to link with, actually, in spirit, you're going to be able to link with other counties, the other counties involved, okay? You're going to be able to link with New Jersey Transit, where, let's say a person wants to go to New York, all right? Well, they live out in the Tastis, well, we're going to pick them up, bring them to an area where New Jersey Transit services it, and then they can go to New York. That's the whole thing. Sussex County actually has four different systems that they're working with to make this work. So what we're doing is, we're not going to try to recreate the wheel, we're going to bring them down here, and they have somewhat in the same situation we have, which is rural and urban, so that's what we're working with. That's all I have to say, we have...
No need for a session.
No need for executive session, so there's a motion to...
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
God bless America.
703.
This has been a QBC Television production, in association with our partners and sponsors. QBC broadcasts on Comcast Cable Channel 22, and livestreams its programming on Facebook and YouTube. All rights reserved by Quin Media and QBC, programming that serves the South Jersey market.